Are you ready? Stan?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Marvin?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Correct. No mayor comments? For workshop, city manager comments?
No comments, Mr. Mayor. You can look forward to a city manager's report in your Monday packet.
Okay. Any agenda changes?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on. The agenda item up is guest speakers. This is where we allow members of the audience to address council and agenda items only. If you wish to address the council piece, please step to the podium, identify yourself by name and community of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. Guys? Richard, okay, thank you. Close the guest speaker portion of the meeting. Actually, that was public comment, but same thing. Because there's no public there is going to comment, no unfinished business. Move on to our agenda item today, the Blue Star by Trail Design Presentation. Ryan, you want to introduce this, please?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Mayor. So at your last council meeting, you had discussed a number of items related to the non-moderized Blue Star Trail, mostly related to the grant process where you decided to match or contribute some dollars to the project, be the lead applicant for the grant, and agree to a maintenance agreement. What was left is reviewing the design, and that's what you're doing at today's workshop. So with us today is the engineers on the project, C2AE. And I can turn it over to Holly if she wants to also add an introduction before you get the presentation on the design.
Thanks, Ron. The key route decisions that the committee made is because through some of the options, he also brought with him a new tool that they were able to share with us, which really is quite helpful in showing.
Can, are you unmuted? Just.
I'm just.
Great, great, thank you.
So, like I was saying, Larry is here to align committee choices for route, and I was just saying that we have a new tool, brand new tool that C2AE is using. It's called Street Mix, and it's just probably in user-friendly graphic to show how you would go over the bridge in a way that I think a regular layperson can understand it. So I'll hand it over to Larry to review design.
Larry, feel free to ask what you'd like to ask clearly to our audience. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. I'm Larry Fox, and I'm the C2AE. I'm the project manager for the Blue Star Trail project. In just a little background, I don't want to bore you with too many details, but basically what we've been hired to do in the first phase of this project is to, with the committee, to develop alternatives, back and review those alternatives, select recommended alternatives to submit for funding, basically for grant applications. And as part of that, also with the alternatives, was to develop cost opinions to use as the basis for the grant applications. So basically, we started out with a big funnel, put all the ideas into there, and reviewed a lot of the work that was previously done, like at least in that break, by friends of the Blue Star Trail. And all of that information kind of went into this funnel. And then, working with the committee, we have narrowed down the alternatives and arrived at a recommended plan that we want to present to you today. So I'm going to focus on the recommended plan, maybe bring up some of the alternatives that we considered, but in addition to what's shown on these boards, there were a lot of other items that were considered that we reviewed. So just know that. And on the handout that goes through the description of all the alternatives, it does have some additional background on other alternatives. This is the same information that is presented in the public information meeting. So we met with the trail committee probably after those meetings. I mean, starting out with pictures, you know, looking our way down. And then also, we did have a public information meeting a couple of weeks ago to gain input on a couple of alternatives. So we narrowed it down for the public information, we had a couple of alternatives, and we received some great input, and a great attendance for a public meeting like that. So very well attended, and did get a lot of input. I didn't give you the summary, although I think it's in the packet electronically. So we did a summary of the public input information, and basically, all of the, all of the input was positive towards the trail. Many said, "Just give it a dawn," or, "It's great that you're at this point, please finish." And then there was some input into the particular alternatives we were asking about. And we'll talk about them more when I get to the specific segments on those. So that's our background. I think with that, I'll get right into a description of the alternatives, and then we'll go through the rest of the information as well. And culminating, hopefully not today, obviously, it's a little section, but Monday night, adopting this resolution that basically spells out the project, the costs, and how the costs are going to be paid. Then basically, the City of South Park is committing to be the lead agency in submitting for the TAF grant, which is the MDOT Transportation Alternatives Program grant. Then subsequently, the intent is to file two Michigan Medical Services Trust Fund grant applications. One, City of South Park, Monday, Sunday. All right, so to talk about the alternatives, and we all have these both in handout and should be also on the electronic version. So we're talking about actually four different sections of the trail. The first being the bridge crossing from Washington Avenue to Lake Street, then Lake Street to Maple, I'm just guessing, and then Maple to Old Elegant, and then the portion in the township that goes all up North Street, and then out to Holland Avenue through the park. So the first section is Washington Avenue to Lake Street. When we went to the public information meeting, we had two different alternatives. The first being a three-lane roadway section with a separated trail, and then that works in and basically requires lane restriping and most likely some delineators for safety, for separation. But there are three sections to this. There's the south approach, which is the lower section. There's the bridge itself crossing, which is the middle section. And then there's the north approach, which is the top section. The south approach and the bridge section are very similar, and that's the one that we got the additional handout for you to get a little better information. So basically, it maintains three lanes of traffic. That's one of the most important things of this alternative. And then provides for a 10-foot, an eight-foot non-moderized pathway with two-foot clear on each side. And those are important when we talk about TAF and the requirements of the ASGOS standards. So that is not exactly compliant with a non-moderized trail, although because we have a sidewalk adjacent for pedestrian use, this is really a cycle track, more or less, on the bridge section itself. And so eight feet for a cycle track is sufficient, and we don't expect to have a difficulty getting out through. Once we get off the bridge itself on the north side, the intent is to go behind the curbing gutter, and where the existing sidewalk is, is to remove the sidewalk and basically widen it to a path width. It will require some tree removal, but there will be space, green space for tree replanting or other shrubbery green space planting. It most likely will require some type of rail log here, because if you all walk that, there's very steep embankment that we're working with in that area. So that's the first alternative. And if you want to go through the discussion items that we put in here, I don't want to go through all of these right now, because we've got a lot of sections to go through here. But the second alternative that was considered but not adopted was a two-lane section that crosses the bridge. And the only way that two-lane section can work, could work, deemed to work appropriately, would be with the addition of a traffic signal at Lake Street. And having it allow for remote operation of that signal to put all stop so that emergency vehicles as the approach would then have free access across the bridge. So it was one of the conditions, I don't want to call it a condition, one of certainly the discussion items that came about with our discussion of the services people. So these alternatives were embedded through them, and that was a very important consideration. Their clear preference was the three-lane section, but thought they could support a two-lane section with a signal. If that's what the committee had chosen. But again, the recommended alternative here is a three-lane section across the bridge. Okay, any questions, I don't want to go into any more depth on that? Yes?
Could you tell us, I'm just in, what dimensions changed then if this? It only is proposed from the.
Yes. It's in the same level.
What, what, what's the increase, what's the decrease, what's the?
Oh, all right, I should have probably printed the existing section on here. I'm going to have to go a little bit from memory, but obviously, the width of the bridge has changed. We've only got to fix them up to work.
Sure.
You all know that, because we've been through this before. There is currently, there is currently a three-lane section with some striped shoulders. And basically, what we're doing is eliminating those shoulders. And the three, I believe the three-lane are currently at 11 feet.
Good. So we'll change in the driving lanes and the center line?
So all of the sections, all of the lanes would stay at 11 feet. But basically, it's eliminating striped shoulders and pushing them all to the east side of the bridge. So the trail, the south or the northbound trail lane, this northbound trail lane will be adjacent to that sidewalk, private sidewalk on the. And if you picture it, when you're driving north right now, basically, you're pushed over to the left, to the west, by the current lane stripe that's giving you that.
Yes.
So basically, that would be a straight-through lane, and then a continuation of a 11-foot lane, and then another 11-foot lane, eliminating the shoulder on that side. And then, basically, where those shoulders were, we're gaining space to put in like that and the separation.
Good.
Is that into your question, or? I don't have it exactly mentioned.
Yeah, I think it helps. It helps that it's on the west side. Why would you put striped?
In, in, that's a picture, it's a separation distance, it wouldn't be striped. But what we're trying to do is, when you're on a bicycle, you're supposed to have a two-foot clear zone from any obstacles, now as a pedestrian on a sidewalk obstacle, I don't know. But it's kind of an imaginative thing, and we're just showing we can fit that. This pictorial, there would be no striping adjacent to the sidewalk.
Okay.
The intent would be this median lane that separates the traffic from bicyclists would be ten pavement marking and most likely.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about the?
Yes, so the delineators are important safety function. We believe that they would be required just to provide that safety aspect between bicyclists and the traffic. Especially, you don't necessarily have to have on a pavement shoulder, obviously, but the bikes are riding with traffic. And this is, this one is riding, oh. Now, so what we wanted to do in this point, this stage of the project, was to point out that delineators are more than likely required, and we put costs in there, in the cost opinion to make sure it's covered. Now, the actual selection of the delineators is something that really is the design phase activity. So it's kind of getting into the detail of further work, which you don't really need to do at this point to do the grant applications. So this will come back to you as a city council for further discussion. I'm not sure if you have a committee or exactly how to do this during the design phase, but certainly, all of these types of final decisions will come back to you before final approval.
So we're looking more of a conceptual?
Exactly. That's exactly what this is intended to be. Exactly, conceptual design.
And that's enough detail to put the grant in. So when we come back to design, that's when we can talk about, Sydney had an idea of doing paintbrushes for the delineators, or, you know, we can talk about doing a mural. Yeah, we can talk about the trees or, you know, the more specific items. But it makes sense that you have enough information that you can justify for that grant without spending a lot of time and effort on the detail, yes.
So, sorry, I'm not sure, this is a bit caught. So the, our timeline for applying for the grant is?
The TAF grant is, they take a quarter.
Yeah. Got it, okay. So, so they're not looking for a specific decision, they're looking for conceptual? And they would be satisfied with conceptual?
Yes, and during their review process, they may come back with some specific questions about how we can accomplish these certain items. But this is the general level of detail that goes into this.
So this is for the TAF grant, refund, and our natural report, resources, trust fund.
Right. A lot of the same, they may even get into them, but it will be tailored specifically to their requirements. And that's April 11th, coming up to some of their.
What's the follow-up? And these dimensions of the trail, of this space of the delineators, of the, that distance you're per, how does that generally match up with what people will be encountering across the original progress, where the existing trails?
So the existing trail in Douglas, my understanding is 14 feet. So it's 10-foot trail, two-foot clear on each side.
Yeah.
So this particular section would be two feet less.
Okay.
But again, we do have the sidewalk adjacent.
Right.
Yeah.
So it can be designed to line up?
Mm-hmm.
So it's pretty much a straight shot as opposed to?
Exactly. Hey, any more questions on segment one? Hey, the next segment is, you also all have these stuff referred to. So this is Lake to Maple. There's certainly some strange intersection, again, very sequel size, and some limited shoulder width there right now. Again, we'll talk about ASGOS requirements. So going back to the face, section one, again, leading off the road, it basically would be separated from the roadway at that point. So the intent is to develop a separated trail from here on to the north. Pretty much matches what has already been constructed in previous segments. So this particular section, because of the limited shoulder width and understeeped slope, we had some special considerations. We had two different options. The one that was selected is the one that is the most compliant with the ASGOS standards, slightly more expensive, but that would be to build an at-grade boardwalk. So basically, extending the flat space by only boardwalk over the edge, and then supporting that boardwalk on the bank. It's, that same product, harder work or concept is actually, rather than a boardwalk, we could put cheap retaining wall on the outside and then handle a, handle a pave path. And what we have talked about with the committee about is our intent would be to design and bid both alternatives and take one that makes the most sense for the long term. Because we do know boardwalks are a maintenance-intensive and costly endeavor. So we're trying to eliminate our boardwalk as possible, so. But this provides us the required separation from the roadway. It doesn't change the roadway in any configuration. So again, gives us safety, gives a separated trail for users who manage it, you're not riding along a cycle. Next, that purple or magenta section, then we have to change typical cross-sections to the north as we approach Maple Street, because we do have a large embankment not going the other way. So you've got a reversal of the embankment upcoming down toward the road. So that would likely require some type of masonry-type block retaining wall, you know, four to six feet. You've got a section on the Blue Star Trail to the north, but you're looking at a similar type cross-section. So that, and this was compared to basically taking the roadway as the other alternative that wasn't chosen, and along the lane line adding curb and gutter. And then reducing our separation because now we've got a physical barrier. So the intent was to see what we could do to reduce the separation, reduce how far we can bend we had to get to try and even limit the cost. But again, that was not chosen, and I think that was pretty clearly supported as well in the public input. So those would be the two sections that really have alternatives. Any questions on this?
So, yes, Larry, so you said we would be proposing two alternates, alternates for the first section, the magenta section, correct?
There was one, or two alternatives for this first segment, two alternatives for this second.
And what would be presented for the grant, for the TAF?
The at-grade boardwalk section or alternative on the second.
With the hope that you get the maximum grant?
Yes.
Awarded then?
And we could talk about, I won't get into that, but our philosophy.
How that works?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Okay, segment three is north of Maple Street on the Old Elegant. So this is now going to be purely separated trail like. Last segment is, again, we've got an embankment section where we'll be some block retaining wall. We've got a section in here that's relatively flat, that we can just do a regular at-grade trail, 10 feet wide, clear on each side. The north section appears to be some left end, just before you go over the wing. And so we have priced it in there for a boardwalk section. Okay? And again, that's 14 feet wide to get to 10 feet or so clear. So for this section, no, no other alternatives were considered, just kind of spit within there and does not require any other alternative. And then, great, the last segment is to the north in the township. So if you picture North Street, you want to blast, please on the north side, there's a little, there's a little tree that's backing a little bit. And that would be lights for a base for a separated trail, that'd be wide to clear. But then we do have the creating left land to cross. We will be going through the park, and the township is in favor of that, and so is the public. And that will require a couple hundred feet of block section in that area. So, and then from there, through the park itself, again, will be separated trail leading into cemetery road, what is 66 through those more. So a separated trail on the east side of 66 through, out to Holland Avenue, connecting to the east side. A lot of different segments, something we can, I don't know, total, a mile, a half, two miles, but really not going to be that much.
Going back to the bridge, I would be remiss if I didn't note that the public did, was very much in favor of a two-lane with the lights. But in the end, we had to separate the light issue from the trail because the city will have to pay the full amount of the lights. We're really not in a position to do that, so we can just treat them as two separate issues for now. But I did want to acknowledge that.
Yeah, I would say the public was very much in favor of the lights, not necessarily the two-lane configuration, which kind of had mixed, you know? So, that's the. Okay, let's see. What else? Here, maybe the cost write down. So we have a total project cost of approximately $2.0 million, now we're estimating. The construction cost for that would estimate to be $1.825 million. So there was some debate within the committee about exactly how much to apply for. The TAF grant requires a minimum of 20%, and generally, you're not awarded at all. So whatever needs to be added typically 30% local match is typically needed, which provides a very competitive application, and so that is what was chosen to proceed with. And that 70% is only for construction, I'll be doing that paper engineering. Where trust fund, they have a $300,000 maximum, we're doing engineering, so the math is a little fuzzy in here. I think we've got it pretty, pretty well defined. So again, we talked about the TAF grant, 70% of construction, so 70% of that, $1.825 million. Trust funds, grants are capped at $300,000. And since we had two lawyers of government that are eligible, it was decided to do two applications. We've done this on trail projects before, it's worked well. So which provides you obviously maximum amount of funding to do it that way. So that leaves a local share of cost of $225,000. Of that, the City of South Park had committed, has committed to $10,000. Park of Township has also committed to $10,000. And the President of the Blue Star Trail has committed $100,000. So that is the basis for funding applications. And then for the TAF grant, what should be considered Monday night is basically this resolution is just going to adopt their, to do the top of the budget. And then, as City of South Park, we will be creative for the application, that's some special wording in there about that. So I don't have every set chance to read through this. I want you to be very comfortable with it, because obviously, this is important. I want to point out a couple of things. So all of the figures that are included here are the same as the machine that's going through. It's certainly worth emphasizing with this application, this is a partnership with the three local municipal and the President of the Blue Star Trail. The intent also to apply for which you trust on. But there is a significance that we talked about. That the City of South Park is authorizing, Brian Rice is the city manager for that, we have the City of South Park, City of South Park, and then this is kind of an important thing here. So what TAF requires in your resolution is that the city has the existence of and commits to the funds necessary to carry out the project, which is fine, because we've got those well defined. But then also, cost overruns and matching problems. So if we get, if they offer the grant, and then we go to bids, and the bids come in high, we tried to put in a third contingency here, my way, you can serve them. But if they come in high, then you would have to commit to providing some additional funds. So we didn't think that that was something, the City of South Park itself should have to commit to us. This, this is the committee speaking. So anyways, basically, there would have to be agreement. Um, so anyways, basically there would have to be uh, um, agreement between the local units of government, the residents of Blue Star Trail. Perhaps on some kind of reciting basis that should they're going to overrun, this is how we recover. So that can still be developed with referencing that there will be a, uh, as part of the option of this resolution.
Which I think is also fair to the friends because then they're not in a position to write a blank check and nor is the city solely on the hook. So.
And just to be clear on that point, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one of the concerns there is the cost overruns in township jurisdiction, right? So if the costs come back and it's a hundred thousand more than the township, the city shouldn't be on the hook for, as the lead agent should be on the hook for uh, those cost overruns. That's why we're so cautious with that forage.
I also wanted to point out um, with the cost that uh, most of the time Larry's firm is dealing strictly with municipalities. And they are providing community match. And we are a very fortunate community because we have a group of our neighbors and friends. Who have stocked up to provide that community match through Jonas. So we're fortunate.
Any other questions here, ma'am?
Yeah, I have questions. Just so you all have had experience, I think with Traverse City and some other entities of applying for this grant.
Correct.
Um, so this is the standard practice that has been taken at other locations to pursue a grant like this.
Yes, this is pretty much the typical applying the sources, the TAP grant and the trust fund. Um, if they were a little, or state lands involved, we could also use the RTT to recreate the trail or grant the best amount of bill here. But, but because we were all caring about stimulus funding and more funding being dedicated to trails, we don't know where that might be funneled. But this doesn't preclude you from applying for additional funding should that upcoming arise.
So in a natural process, the, these are our first steps.
Yes.
So um, we'll take it one step at a time.
And what was the date that we would hear back from uh, TAP that if we were competitive?
So we would expect to hear back in December or January. And they may come back with some additional questions, comments, but by the time we do the trust fund applications, should there be a feel for how it's standing with the TAP? And that will be important for the trust fund. Obviously, if TAP has approved it, I think that provides additional incentive for the trust fund. You know, that this is a viable project and funding is a community goal. So.
Cause there is a connection between these.
There are. It's not direct, but they certainly do work together for funding.
So I should go light a candle? Got it.
Well, I think we've got a strong application in certainly hiring. Um, C two AE has worked for our advantage, to our advantage, um, the community liaison, also their familiarity with um. And Dodd and some of the funders and just their trail experience has been extremely helpful.
I mean, also just worth mentioning um, was the letter that I got from the friends of Blue Star Trail that did commit themselves to. Uh, the dollar amount that they're willing to, to provide. So it's not a small amount of money.
Certainly much appreciated. It's a great, really.
It's a lot of work, many years.
Well, being a. Can't say a colon of underneath the first few meetings or years when we were working on this. I really appreciate the fact that we're at, we are, we're at going across the bridge and into Lake Street. I mean, I think Richard and I had some pretty good conversations about. My concern about the, the three lane approach and keeping the acceleration lane coming out of the city. And so I'm glad that the, that the committee worked that out and it was designed that way. So. I appreciate, I appreciate that, that, that work and coming to a consensus on it.
Well, knowing that was such an important issue, um, C two AE, one of their owners actually um, is uh. Has experience as a fireman, had worked with Janet uh, on some projects. Um, and we brought public safety, including um, the, the Douglas uh, police in Allagum County to the table from the very beginning. So that was always a part of the process for us was public safety and getting the engineers. And the public safety representatives at the table right away so that we could answer those questions. And everybody would get their concerns.
Well, absolutely. Because last year we had several situations where with the configuration of the Douglas section of the bridge. Once you got uh, past Union Street there, there's, you know, there were issues being responding in a timely fashion, emergency services and, and. Well, Douglas and over in our portion of, of, of the city. Now Douglas is lucky because they have a bailout provision. They could go down uh, Main Street or around Union Street to get into any clock. But if we had a clock between Sagatuck and, and, and Main Street going in Douglas, there's no place to go for emergency services. So I think that was very critical, my, at least from my perspective, to make sure you had Adam, that, that emergency lane all the way to it. At least get it all the way through Douglas, or at least be able to detour through, through town if they had to get her out to Oval Beach in the summer. Or downtown some other other cities. So. Yeah, that, that's good.
Okay, any other questions from council or engineering firm?
I, I would just like to say, um, you know, I know the committee and the engineering firm and the friends of the Blue Star put a lot of time. And a lot of discussion. And I know, um, we're probably not even aware of all the time it's taken. Um, so I want to commend Holly for her leadership on that. And I really appreciate everyone's time and diligence. Um, and uh, it feels good. It feels really good. So thank you all very much.
There were a comment uh, and. Also, person Truster asked us to share this with his concerns about the trees, but I, there's no use getting into it because. Larry mentioned that that's part of the design phase and that's where you can look at various alternatives. Uh, I'm sure there'd be a study to see really the expected life expectancy, expect, expected life expectancy of the current trees. Because Ryan pointed out there, there, we're getting close to having some root problems with affecting curb and sidewalk and things. But, and so, you know, all those things can be part of that, that discussion.
Gets pretty sure.
Trees in USA, we have to, you just can't get the chainsaw around some cutting trees. It's fine with our own ordinance, I believe.
And this thing you said, you can reply.
Yeah, and they, and that's all stuff that we can share too at one of these meetings.
Larry, correct me if I was wrong in that, in that statement to, to Mayor that those existing trees were going to present some issues, potentially with some root. So we have to, we already need to do a little bit of the sidewalk on the interstate.
Yeah, once Ryan.
And I really think that the, the separate trail in that section is, is pretty important to public safety. It takes a lot of confusion away from all the motorists and the cyclists at the intersection, right, by separating them. So it really becomes a much more simple decision, you know, whether it's safe for cyclists just to cross the street. As opposed to maneuvering in and out of traffic. And um, I, I think it's, I think it's a really good solution.
Richard, John, anybody? Any comments? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just quickly, I thank you all for your service and the attention you paid to this issue. Three quick things. The, the, the first, the, the two lane option of the traffic light that you've heard about. Uh, from Larry and Holly, and just to emphasize, um, this, that was the option that was preferred by the committee. In its initial voting. Uh, it was preferred three to one by the public in the information session and was preferred by the friends board. Uh, but for reasons as Holly explained, uh, it wasn't practical to proceed with that. But I just ask you to keep that in mind going forward uh, with respect to the traffic light. It's clearly, there are a lot of people who think that would be a good idea. Second thing is, I just ask you to also keep in mind, and I'm sure you do, and Scott just alluded to this. The, the concerns while you're looking at all these things, the concern, the safety of pedestrians and bikers. Uh, understandably, the fire department is concerned about their job getting to the source of uh, you know, particular events, whether it be a fire or some of the urgency. Uh, and as, as the mayor said, that, that is important uh, to consider what their needs are. But also remember the needs of the pedestrians and bikers. Many people have told us in the course of doing this, they feel unsafe now. Uh, and I would suggest to you that you do have a safety problem now. Uh, and this will uh, address a lot of that, I hope. And then finally, just kind of looking forward, there's an opportunity, I think. If you, if you want to try to look ahead with some vision. Uh, if we can establish a nice safe corridor between Sagatuck and Douglas, I think that would be a room to both communities. And we've heard from many people that gee, I just wish I could safely get from here to there and I just don't feel that I can. And so, and you know, as, as Larry figured out, that, that is beyond us to go up there again and then ask for your, your hire to do that. But if you will keep that in mind, you know, that, that I think that could be a room to both communities if we need to call that one. Thank you.
Just, just, just hold on because I, I was going to mention that I think still have so the project. We still do need to work with the issue of, you know, Douglas resides on the east side of Star Sagatuck, downtown is on the west side. And all this is great for helping people on the longer journeys. There's still a ton of people that are just trying to get from downtown Douglas to downtown Sagatuck. And that's still, for example, you know, that, that D G township is still going to. Require people to make a decision from a stand sidewalk or kind of carry on downtown. Well, don't make it, you know, kind of, remember that. But crossing is to, to attempt to get back on the traffic. And how we still manage that. And then the same is true on the Douglas side. I know you, now you're, you had this very long path and now you're trying to figure out when and the right time is to make your move in Douglas. Which I think is part of the bulk of our, you know, summertime vacation visitor traffic is trying to navigate the two communities. And you know, the Blue Star Trail is great, but it's an expansive trail covering a number of communities. But we still have this issue that we need to find as we move forward or to make it easier than in the public. Save people to, kind of ways to walk and like to, to schools, to, to, to downtown. So I'm glad you asked us this.
Yeah, one, one of my love stars with this, I had to learn what ASHTO regulations was and there was like a bible of ASHTO. But um, and, and it is society of highway uh, transportation officials and engineers. And basically, what it, what it does is it elevates all roadways. I love that. So it, it does mean that, you know, the car has as much um, right to that road as somebody on a stroller, somebody taking a walk with somebody on a bike. You're, you're elevating everybody trying to get somewhere and allowing them a safe space to do that. And they've made these decisions, you know, at first I thought, oh my God, it's so big, what's happening? But really, it's, it's, you know, about an eight-year-old on a bike with his dad and, you know, the radius of, you know, their handlebars. And if a stroller comes by, I mean, it, it really, it really has been an engineer. How, and you're right, we do need to think about sort of the long-term vision of how we connect the places. But right now, really, we're just trying, this project is just trying to connect the trails that we have. We always talk about building a trail. We're not connecting our communities by connecting the trails that we have.
It's critical stuff.
Yeah, but you're right. We have to, you know, it's, it's going to be an ongoing process. Of smart planning.
Okay, and uh, there's a little further comment, Lauren? Good? Brian, you're good with the comments? Okay. Uh, so those sections move on. We have additional opportunity for public comment. Anyone wants to, you know, the, the. How it's done, so moving on to council comments. I think you go around tables. If none, uh. Take a motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say yes?
Yes.
Suppose none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll be in touch about the, I'll be in touch about the council table for Monday.
Maybe you can come down and talk about some things. I'm around, so.